Achievable agenda, we're gonna get started.
Yes.
Welcome, welcome everybody, reminder, this is the combined July, August planning commission meeting. And so the reason we're not doing over the fourth Wednesday, split rate in between. First order of business on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the June twenty six meeting, everybody should have those either in packet or in electronic form. Any modifications? Additions? There being none, a motion to approve as submitted.
Make that motion.
I'll thank you, thank you, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? You? Okay, back to my. Um, so the next order of business is uh naming of a vice chair, you may have noticed John Kennedy is not sitting in his spot right here. Little bit of us, uh John has moved out of the township, therefore is no longer eligible to be on the planning commission. Um, so we need to, uh he serves two functions besides the fact that we'll have to replace a new member on the body. He was vice chair, he was also our representative to the Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission. Like to see if we can address those two, um I've asked folks to let me know of of interest and and uh. Having solicited that, um I would like to nominate Julie Hurley to be vice chair.
Second, second.
Thank you, thank you, uh are there any other nominations? We should do this parliamentary. Hearing none, uh all in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Other than Julie, Julia?
Continue.
You you can't vote instant, you're not voting, uh thank you very much for agreeing to serve. So next, next month, make sure you come sit here, because this is where I'm looking for the advice I need, so. Um, so then we need uh somebody to represent us on the Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission that meets on a quarterly basis. Uh, we're one of seven municipalities that are part of that, um I I've talked, Dave Goodman said he would be willing to uh to take that on, Julia said she. Was not looking to take that on as she wants to try to get handle. South for business, so um any uh conversation around that, I don't think we need a vote to do that, but it's gonna be. For taking that, um I'll make sure uh they uh Joe Jaccas can get you the schedule when the events to come up at what I'm getting up to speed and we'll notify them. Okay, um so those two administrative pieces being covered into the plan reviews, lead rock crossroad develop.
My name's Anthony Broken, Core Still Consulting, back from John Shawada, Shawada Contracting. Uh plan in front of you, you've seen before, is the letter across from development at the. Southwest intersection of Cross Road and Harley's Well Pike. For the village district, with recap, it's uh six units, just three twin homes. Uh primary access off of Cross Road, it's two way access. And then we proposed a emergency access from Harley's Little Pike. Which is to be combined with a relocated residential driveway for the neighbors property to the north. Right, what's pointer is? Discuss several waivers for this project, uh mostly road widening. Uh some landscape waivers. We go with those again, if you'd like, uh tonight, but for now. I guess we pick up where we left off last time, we were talking about landscaping. The wall, we brought some visual aids tonight to show you a little more what we're proposing out here. Um. This is pretty much what you're seeing is our final landscape plan at this point. Got a lot of perimeter landscaping, uh shrubs, buffering type uh landscape plants around the parking areas. But it's on top of the wall, plantings at the bottom of the wall, property line in the back. Mind that's a retaining wall that's shown along the backside of the access driveway there for the back property. Uh just necessary to create a level.
And remind me.
Drive the parking area.
Remind me, what's the maximum height of that wall?
It's six feet where the stone area is shown.
Yeah, okay.
Uh and that's mainly to accommodate a pipe that comes out. Of a underground stormwater management basin, that's up underneath that green island area. And from there, either side, it's more like five or four feet maximum around the curved area as it tapers. Uh back towards the roads, we're talking two to three feet, you know, for most of them. So it's fairly low wall. Uh we had a fence proposed on top of the wall and a guardrail, just to protect traffic that's going around that loop drive.
I think we had actually talked about maybe providing an elevation so we could sort of see how this stacks up, do we have?
I don't know if we talked about an elevation, I don't have an elevation, that's something that will be generated by. Designer of the wall plan itself, which is not something we do, that's a structural engineer will produce that, it'll be reviewed by Michelle. Um, they do produce elevations, I have pictures that show the type of wall that we're proposing. Hopefully that helps you. Mike has one up now, that's the. Uh basically the type of fence that we talked about last time, it's a decorative metal fence, we're gonna call it a state fence. Um. That's basically the kind of block wall we're proposing, it's a split face block wall. Very common type of wall for retaining walls, there's typically a geo grid, got a reinforcement layer that goes behind it. So it's very, the almost commercial grade wall that goes in there. Um. Another example.
The maximum height is six feet, what's?
Yeah, so that's obviously that scale.
Uh, that's a good shot.
Yeah.
Um, so to walk us through where, how much will be at six feet, what the rest running, it'll be?
Sure, if you go back. Along the southern property line. Along the straight portion there. On the far right side, it's basically nothing, as you move towards the back of the property. Uh you get higher and higher, the grade drops off there towards the back. All along that property line, it's like a maximum of three to four feet in that area. Then we hit the curve, you're looking at more like four to five feet. All the way around to the stone area where the stormwater pipe will discharge. That's where there's a current stormwater discharge from the existing basin there now. To make that invert work where the pipe comes out, the elevation of the pipe needs to be at a certain depth. That's the highest point of the wall, just to make that work with the existing condition basically, and that's six feet, I think more, more or less. Everywhere else, as you come out of that pipe area, you're back to five feet, four feet, three feet along the. Uh western property line, a little lower uh height there, mostly in the three to four foot range. And as you move up towards the road, again, it tapers down to nothing.
So it'll be that wall, so the black. Bottle clad fence on top.
It's an aluminum fence typically, yeah.
Alright. Um and then there'll be landscaping on ground level in front of the wall and landscaping behind the fence facing the new one. Right. Top.
On top of the wall is the higher side where the driveway is.
Right.
And there's only so much you can plant there, our landscapers proposed. Basically all grass type flowering plants. Something you can plant in about nine inches of soil, that's what you could reasonably install in that kind of location. Cause there's also a uh guardrail going in there, as I said. So there's limited space, you know, plant like a large shrub, but you get a lot of ornamental grasses. Uh flowering plants, things like that, that will provide a nice visual effect, I think, and some screening there. Then lower down, there's more of a shrub. Uh hedge. That's proposed on the bottom, to basically height the wall to some extent along that property line.
And that was my point, if any of the neighbors from either the southern side or the western side will have shrubbery between them and the stone wall.
Correct. And again, the main, you know, exposed section of all is that back left corner. Which doesn't really face any properties, that's a lot of open space back there right there.
Yeah, just briefly, when we were looking at this couple of episodes ago, about. Being sure that there's a place for future trail or for pedestrian access rather, it would catch to the property of the north.
So there's a sidewalk from the. Parking areas you can see that goes up to Cross Road. And the intent of the plan is to allow pedestrian access where the emergency paved driveway is from Harley's Little Pike. So with the proper easement, say in the future. People can pass all the way through there.
War three thirteen, we talked about that, is that also one that's sort of have the other.
Next.
Yeah. Only that we wouldn't really take pedestrian traffic out for one thirteen and the sidewalk down on Cross Roads, or.
Correct, right now, there's no other pedestrian access basically on one thirteen there, it's pretty tight border. In the future, if that would be provided, a lot of things will have to happen. You actually ride a boy, a lot of infrastructure. And that was uh covered or talked about in the pedestrian study that was done in the township, the Walkable Letter X Study. And I know, I believe that specific area is the thirteen or things they're looking at or something. Fifteen years in the future, I believe, or something like that.
Yep.
So I think it's pretty far out at this point. But we do provide pedestrian access from the development to one thirteen, should there be a crosswalk or something provided across one thirteen. These residents will at least have that access.
So I think we can address most of the design issues, want to take us through the waiver list?
Sure, um I got a couple of questions.
Please.
Uh first one is on the hydrants.
Yes.
We talked about that, I see you have one up here at the top by five points, a sub coming against Cross Road. Could that one be moved just slightly more down Cross Road, so it's not so close to the perimeter?
Probably, yes.
Okay.
There's no line in Cross Road, so it's an extension of the main there.
Right, just make the extension just slightly longer.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a lot of truck traffic and traffic in that area.
Yeah.
It should, it'd be a lot, hopefully it's down further.
Think we're trying to avoid as much as possible some existing. Improvements that are there, side of the MRI build MRI building.
Whatever you do.
I mean, it's in the right of way, so we need to make it happen, I think we can.
Like the same shoot for.
Uh just like pit probably by the front corner of the house. I don't know how many feet, it's not that, right, yeah, right. The other one, I thought we had talked about, but it could be wrong, putting another stub down in the second uh emergency access. Where the stub would be around where the bollard is.
I don't recall talking about that, there's an existing hydrant.
Well, there is one down lower, but this one would be off the road and plus coming in. Where the trucks coming in from where we would come from, from the Harley'sville up one thirteen and then down and around. Uh we'd have to come down past it, swing around, go back in. And then stop here and then get out through the bollard, this way we'd have the stub there, the hydrant there, pull right into there and we can take care of all that. Proceeded. So.
So would this be?
It'd probably be about the same size stub as that one you have in the corner.
Sure, to the north of the driveway?
No, it's actually back the driveway, he's actually looking to get back into the.
This is the one towards skip back where the bollard is down here.
Yeah.
It's up, he has it up there now.
Oh my goodness.
Try to pin.
Yeah, you're right there over to the right. That real black dot there.
Right, between the road and the bollard, basically, somewhere, I would say to the north of. The access driveway.
Well, not so much, I I meant in.
In, but yes, on that side is what I'm saying.
Okay. Either side doesn't matter.
Okay.
Not far from.
Right about where the bollard is, because we gotta get out and uh work the bollard to get that to go, so it it take care of two virgins once though.
Would you want it right in that nook, so to speak, where the bollard is?
That'd be fine. As well, the bollard is in the middle of the room, but often we would see either side of that be. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the other side. It might be the south side.
Right, yeah, alright, I heard it.
Why don't you talk to the, why don't you talk to the water company, they might not want you to go that far in. Joe, they might want it to be within the uh right of way, or Harley'sville Pike.
That's true, there's.
So you know what they would like, why don't you talk to the water authority and see what they will allow you to do?
Cause they'll be working down there anyway, putting in those uh meter boxes and stuff like that, so. They'd be in the area.
Mm-hmm. Are we talking another fire hydrant down there?
Yes.
So we're gonna have two within like a hundred feet of each other?
Yes, but this one would be in off the road. I don't know, that one may be, I I think we have that at eighty feet. But for means of coming in to use the hydrant, it'd be more of an issue and take us longer to have to go down, pass, swing around. And come back up and then go into the uh emergency access.
So why don't we eliminate the one on the corner, is that?
Because that one would be for us use going into the other, the access off the crossroads.
Okay, I'll tell you, I'm not happy about that, that's a lot of fire hydrants in these spots. And they're staying fired and trucks and stuff, they'll do this all the time. But normally, we have them every four to five hundred feet apart.
Well, normally on a regular straight road, we're within a thousand feet of each other. This is another, you know, an added complex here, it's back in an area that we're gonna need to get to quickly.
So to Michelle's point, why don't we see what the board already does, if they say, well, we just want it out here, well then at that point, you're kind of the same spot, if they'll let you do it in there, then that'll serve that whole contingent. You know, maybe at some point you're gonna need that.
Yeah, that's true, they wanna get rid of that one.
Okay, and the other issues on the emergency turning radius plan? You have in there uh with the truck though, you have the gray area where the wheelbase of the truck goes, then you have the red areas. Where the swing, front swing of the truck goes.
The overhang.
Yeah, yeah. That uh set that island area in the middle. Uh that's has the curving around it, it shows the truck coming in and going over the curb by what, three, four, five feet?
With the overhang?
Yeah, with the overhang, at whatever we have underneath the front bumper, then we get taken off. Because we'd be going over a seven, eight inch high curb.
Okay.
We would need that turning radius to be, you know, not having to go over a curb.
Do we break the curb there? Would that solve your issue, I should say?
As long as the curb's not there, it's level that we can get in there.
That's your, that's your stormwater basin, so I don't want it to be a s- a sharp drop off for the basin. Why don't you see if you could tighten up that radius down where you start the turn, right, um go down to the right, what? If you could tighten up, yep, break down there, if you could tighten up that, not that one, there, thank you, you could tighten up that radius and pull your turn. Closer and then maybe tighten up the radius where you are, where you do overhang the curb on the other side, left, yeah, there.
But that would be the only area in there where we have that issue.
How much clearance do you need there for the truck?
Well. The normal clearance between the road and uh, you know.
You don't want any overhang over the curb.
Right.
Correct, we've shown that type of overhang many times before, that's why I showed it. Thinking that was okay with you.
Well, most of the time, we don't get to see that, always use the gray area.
Yeah.
I appreciate you putting that.
Pick a truck. Eighten inches off.
So Michelle, you say tighten one at three, what is what do you?
Kind of elongate that radius maybe in there and shorten up that one side if we can.
And start turning earlier.
Oh, right.
Slide or.
But we'll still keep the same depth of that. Curved.
Oh, yes, for sure.
Catch that parking.
For sure.
Yeah, that's a part of the week. I love that you're gonna retract it. Alright, so you'll just compress any that with and that will give them the later reducing even your done.
We'll, we'll see, yes, yeah.
We'll try.
Alright, thank you.
So, so topic.
That's it, thank you.
Mike, did you want to bring on, there's a house elevation in there?
Sure.
Want to more, you'd ask for elevation, the building. This is a typical, this is would not be the final product, but. Drop right in typical home elevation of what we're kind of looking at here, that's the style of. House. Two halves of twin, there's a porch on the front. Village style, you know, that's why I think you're looking forward here. Just wanna run that by you as well.
Like in four square. But. And if I do recall, you will have steps coming down like that, and then there's a walkway to the sidewalk, right?
Yes, yeah.
Good. Like I said, just quickly go through the. The waivers for me, I think the first one I had to call over twelve foot and eight foot, you're proposing eleven and six, I think we talked about that, so that was okay, as long as uh traffic engineering.
Oh, always no quite. Sure, eleven and six, I believe. That would apply to, I believe, Cross Road as well. We discussed with Stephanie and she was okay with, okay, the final was, we should run that. Uh we had a waiver for clear site triangles. It's a site distances. We're showing the seventy five foot side triangles, which are less than technically required there. One of the side triangles on, actually both of them have. What you say on Cross Road, we have improvements shown in that side triangle, the the corner of one of the buildings, and one street tree, I think is still there. Uh, street tree can be approved by the board if they choose to do so. I don't think anybody had an issue with the corner of that first building being in the triangle as well. We agreed to keep any other landscape and objects out of that area though.
Joe, I don't have to sign off on the side triangle.
Yeah, not the side triangle, the side distances.
I think technically we're asked for a waiver of site distances as well. Because we're less than what will be the penned out requirement, pen down will prove that, within the safe stopping site distance, which is. What pen out uses if you're not able to meet their, I guess, preferred site distance. We've moved these driveways, as you know, as far from that intersection, uh one thirteen and Cross Road as we can. And we're improving the site distance from the existing home on Harley'sville Pike by moving that farther to the south. I think we all agree that that's an appropriate waiver. I mean, waiver from. Section one forty two thirty four E, which was distanced from street intersections for driveways. Uh. Questionable how much distance we need if it's to the intersection or to the next driveway, we're violating the seventy five foot distance requirement. To an intersection, if that includes driveways. Uh, we're well over seventy five feet from the intersection.
Right.
Uh we have a waiver for grade exceeding four percent within the ultimate right of way. Uh, part of the park, you see, for when the reverse check access comes out. And that's just to provide a smoother transition up to the new residential driveway there, a little less steep in that area.
I would assume you're probably reducing the slope from that driveway from what it is today.
Probably a little bit, it's a little longer length to come swing around there. But there's an embankment there that we have to make up on the side of Harley'sville Pike, so we need to make a little bit of grade there. Uh we waiver for parking areas being located less than fifteen feet to attract boundary. That is on the unit four building. Uh which is the far right hand side building on that property line, thank you, Mike. Or a ten foot offset there, rather than fifteen, a lot of zoning code, but not the saldo, so there's a waiver question for that. To keep the buildings pushed to the right side there as far as possible. And leave some gap between th- those two buildings on Cross Road.
Yeah, I mean, normally, I I don't think we'd wanna, we wouldn't be so positive about that, but given the fact that. The adjacent property is just open space and parking lot, and I'd like having the gap in between the two buildings, if we pulled, yeah. Reach the side yard, we have to reduce the separation, if I don't think we want to do that. Agree.
Whenever then, one forty two thirty five C, uh right sidewalk curb, storm sewers and parking lots, this is a partial request. Cause we are not showing curb in every location within the parking lot. We are showing uh storm sewers and sidewalks for the most part. Uh, there's a spot at that same location, we're just looking at where there's no curb proposed, that's basically to. Aid and stone wall runoff from that apron property to funnel down in there. And into our store or management system. Discuss that, the next uh waiver I have, one forty two thirty six F. Which was parking house, we have minimum of twenty four feet wide for two way traffic flow. We agreed to do a twenty foot wide. Uh drive aisle around the backside of the property at the top of the wall. Just to reduce the inverters coverage. Make a little more green space back there. And being that there's no parking spaces adjacent to that area, I believe twenty feet is sufficient for traffic to get around there.
The next street, the street trees.
Yes.
Moving along to that one, though, I know you you don't have any place to put the eleven trees, usually it was either is to put them somewhere else or do a fee in lieu of.
Yes.
On you work on getting Joe's fire hydrant and then we'll worry about the trees later. Or we'll worry about the trees, get them as fire. Big tendons. I can help a little, I can't help a lot. As a guy who watched his barn burn down, I'm a big fan of fire hydrant now.
The trees that are depicted on there, that's, are they street trees or are they just landscaping?
Those are just a combination, so it's got some street.
Yeah, there's three things.
Yeah.
No, the the ones on the top there, yeah, that's three, that makes three, maybe two.
Yep.
But they consider street trees, so we may not have those.
No, no, he does, okay, but but he does the calculation, he should be giving us eleven more, but he had right place to put those all up.
And those aren't existing, right, you may end up taking down the existing ones, you said.
We're taking down the existing and replacing with those.
Okay.
Technically, there's street trees required on a driveway.
Right.
For a, I think it's five units or more, with six units. And the emergency access driveway would apply to that, so we're not proposing street trees there for various reasons. We are showing street trees again on the other driveway. Uh up alongside the building on the left side. Those are full size shade trees or street trees, so they count towards that total.
So any other questions or feedback? Questions from? The public? So we've seen this at least four times now, I think we've worked through everything, I I. I'd be in favor of uh moving this along contingent upon satisfaction of the turning radius issue and uh final placement of the fire hydrant. So I'll make that motion. Second, 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 uh this is preliminary final approval, so this will move you along.
Alright, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you, thank you.
Plan more. It is, that is, how are you?
Alright.
Good evening. Uh my name's Mike Malloy, I write for Maxwell Hippel, um. Say it really fast. Yeah, um, so I'm here for, uh we have a Marmar estate, a Marmar tonight, and it's for a project called Sunflower Estates. And the reason we're running tonight is that um uh. Prior attorney who represented these guys a couple days ago, uh filed a zoning hearing board. And uh we understand there's the review, uh just cursory review that, and there's a lot of variances, or or seemingly a lot of variances. Um in number, when you look at the project overall, okay? But we think that particularly for this board, um the plan commission, um that you should take a. Broader approach, a broader look at the project and consider some of the the other things that we're gonna talk about tonight. Um. We're not necessarily asking to weigh in on the variances, because we're testing the temperature of the room tonight, you know, on the project. Um. The variances, while numerous, really apply to the standards as applied to each individual lot. And the story behind uh this, and if we can put the the plan up, I guess, I mean.
So, yeah, okay.
So, that's great, the aerials are the aerial with the the green, green one, page three is fine, taking a look at it. It's great. So obviously the uh. Lots that are drawn in are the ones that we're talking about tonight, and that's a six point one acre parcel. Uh, on Hoffman Road that lies between Shannon Lane and Champion, and. As you can see, to the south and the east is Letterak Golf Course, to the north are, you know, some larger lot uh houses. It's R one A zoning, um. That requires eighty thousand square foot lots, so one-point-eight-three, et cetera, uh, not quite two acres. So, we think this parcel is situated in an unusual location because it is. Sort of, I'm not gonna say sandwiched, but it's placed between. Small fifteen thousand square foot lots to the south, the east, you know, adj- adjacent to the golf course. And originally, when Marmar came in uh to the township, we had an eight-unit plan that was closer. Uh, to being an extension of the golf course. An extension of that that planning, smaller lots. Township staff. Didn't react great to that plan, so Marmar went back and sharpened their pencils, and now. What you see are lots that are about. Roughly thirty thousand square foot to forty-four thousand square foot depending, so they're about. You know, half-ish or a little more than half of what's required under the ordinance, but certainly double what the smaller lots are. So. You know, economic hardship isn't. Something I'm gonna say before the zoning hearing board, because after twenty years they'll throw me out, but I'll talk to you guys about the economy, right? Um, Marmar develops. Luxury homes. Super luxury custom homes, these homes are gonna be. Retail one-point-five million will probably cost one-point-three-five, one-point-four to build. So margins aren't, you know, these guys are not killing it here on this project, we're not trying to be, you know, I always say to my. Clients, don't be pigs, you know, you'll never get away with it. This is a transitional zoning kind of plan, right? We're looking at. You know, small lots to large lots, and this is the transition. If we extended and got three or four, maybe if we push the eighty thousand square foot zoning after the the net outs. You'd still probably be looking at the same sized house. And so you'd be looking at one-point-five million. They would not make anywhere near, you know, the hundred thousand that they're trying to make off the lots, and it's just not not worth it, you know, at the end. And it's not worth it, not because we can't build a cheaper house, right? But it's not worth it because they built such a great house, and so. You know, from a project perspective, we get it. There's relief required. But, you know, we have to take a step back and look at it, okay, we say. It's not an, you know, an inordinate amount of lots, we're adding six. It's a cross-section between the zoning that allows for the golf course and for the large lots. You're retaining and maintaining, probably, you know, if you talk to my client, probably increasing, you know, the value. Of the adjoining properties. Given the fact that. Marmar builds at such a high level. And I asked these guys before, because I haven't represented them, so if I was, I'm sorry if I was talking during the other presentation, but. And I said, like, what do you build, where are you building? So they're building in, like, Newtown, they're building in Yardley. I grew up in Lower Bucks, love it town, not near those places, you know, I got maybe some relatives up there, but their houses are. You know, again, the one-point-five being pretty much the basement price for any of their houses, but. Their houses up there are, you know, getting into the eight thousand square foot. Six thousand, eight thousand square foot and selling three, four million dollars. And I love Lower Southford, I live in Ambler, it's great, I've been practicing on and off up here for years. It's just not the price point that's gonna work. An eight thousand square foot house, which is what you'd probably have to build on the three-lot kind of subdivision. It's just not gonna work, so. You know, if we were able to go to the zoning hearing board. With your recommendation would be awesome, you know, if we got it tonight for the variances. Um, we'd probably bring a planner, we'd probably justify or try to justify this transitional zoning. Try to prove that it's, you know. Not going to be harmful and in fact probably beneficial to the adjacent property owners, given the. Um, given the fact that it really probably is impossible to replicate the eighty thousand square foot lots. In this environment today, I'm not gonna tell you it's impossible forever. But in any time in the immediate future, given the market, given the residential market. Um, and again, I'm just a lawyer, I'm not a realtor, a planner, anything, but that's what they'll say. It's just not gonna be a viable option to build something that's uh by right.
So I appreciate you saying you wanted to take the temperature, and I. Certainly understand that the long list of variances is somewhat the outcome of. The fact that you're doing six homes, so you start creating a whole bunch of things around length of cul-de-sac, distance between all that fun stuff.
Step back one, step back two.
So, we're really out thrown by the number of variants.
Yes, I agree.
My my problems with this are all philosophical. Um, and I'll I'll give them to you, um, first is. This portion of the township in our comprehensive plan and in the Indian Valley Regional Comprehensive Plan is explicitly called out to be low density. So we have dedicated growth areas, lots of people in the room have had to hear me talk about the fact that developments that they don't like closer into town. Is where we've said we want a development, this isn't the part of the township we said we don't want. Development, um, so that's specifically why it is R one A. Um, the second is, you know, I think we're confusing lot size and density. The golf course has smaller homes because we specifically said we would do a cluster. And the cluster therefore allowed the creation of a ton of open space, both for the golf course as well as for the buffering that could that goes around it. Um, to to just do this, just to do that size lots, doesn't doesn't do anything. Within cluster, there is a concept of a density bonus sometimes, it's usually on the order of like ten to twenty percent. This is a hundred percent, like, that's just beyond the pale of what we ever do inside um of a cluster. And then the last part, and and I'm sure you probably built a great home, like, that, believe me, like, none of this is personal, it's not that we don't want you in the township, um, but. There is no hardship. And to create this kind of deviation from the underlying zoning without any hardship. My recommendation is to the township is, that makes sense, an enormous precedent that would create immense problems for us down the road that I would not wanna embark upon, so. I'm sure they're lovely homes. Just speaking for myself, the other members can speak for themselves, I I would never be comfortable recommending to the board supervisors to endorse this plan. Not because it's not a good product, but because for all the reasons I just stated. Anybody else?
I agree a hundred percent of what you said.
Doc, you're really talking about rezoning this area, and. I don't think we wanna do that.
And 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 if we do it, we open a can that we absolutely, you know. Cause then everybody else on adjacent parcels, you're already sort of radiating out from the golf course, so why don't we just keep that low?
And if the financial side of it doesn't work for you because of the high quality or specific type of house you wanna build, then. Either build a different kind of house or put it somewhere else.
So, Mike, do you, uh, so, are you going to the zoning hearing board?
Uh, we don't know, so, you know, um. Will. That, I I don't know, I don't, I don't, if if what you're asking me is, do I wanna uh uh denial or your your recommendation?
We do, we do, you know, recommendation of support or uh against, and, you know, and that goes to supervisors, they develop an action, the township wants to take in front of.
Sure, okay, great, and I'm just gonna step outside really fast with my client, just, and we've talked about this prior to this, so.
You got a bunch of folks here, so I'll ask if anybody wants, while you guys are stepping out, does anybody have any questions or comments?
What we'd like to say for that.
Um, messenger. Isn't right, or. Does Marmar, pretty already?
Sorry, equitable, you're under agreement, it's under agreement.
It is under agreement.
Yeah, but they're not the owner, they're, they're not the owner yet. Uh, we haven't closed on it, what's called the equitable, I don't know, which we have it under agreement. Agreement is sale, we can buy it, or you can act, yeah. This falls for. Love to do it. Have the best of time, money and effort, so.
But they do this all the time, correct? Is this, this part of the house? Four, five thousand per point, I'm pretty sure. Probably come from the houses in the garden. Certainly. Outside. This is. If I have that house, the new house. Someone else. To the, to the area.
Nice houses in the, actually, it's not that they don't, but they're on the ugly boxes. Ice houses, you know, there's to be. Something to be developed, could be growing there, yeah.
We've been there almost twenty-seven years, and. I mean, there's no benefit for us, I mean, we're not moving, probably dying in that, but. I mean, it as far as bringing up our property value, that means absolutely nothing to us, because almost twenty-seven years, we just. We love it there because of the location and because of the openness. To to put six houses. It just, it doesn't fit. It just doesn't fit for that end.
I'm sorry, can we get uh some names? Okay, and then. Sorry, we, I know we met, but.
We did?
Yeah.
What you think, can you?
Thank you.
Somebody that could be help. The family variances. Is there something?
This is the land is cost money, development and the all the improvement, everything is cost money. And then if you split this by the number of the houses. This point, you know, nobody pay you. Money for the small tiny house. Such a lot of money. If you're going to buy something, you need, if you pay. You won't be get something, let's see, if you put two houses there.
At the right price, whatever that price is. Appreciate your comments, or any other questions or comments?
Hi, I'm Laura, I'm Gina. And I've got a question for your, like, uh. Yes, can you sum up to us in a couple sentences? The the reasons that you wanna do this, but I think what I'm hearing is instead of. It's basically a financial advantage to your company, I'm not aware, it's like, well, this is not quick, because that's kind of.
I mean, it it's not just financial advantage, it, whatever. Project makes any animal, you know, so it's a financial. Again, this is not something that we are in front of zone. This is planning. It's financial priority, I don't think there's any other words. It's not something that. Not just five variant. Respect to that.
As a memory, I just.
I mean, but for this, you've got a property, certain parts of the land that. And that has uh, points that has to be treated for a certain period of time, and so, if you. Bring it down to, let's say, two units or three units, or if we push four. Um, you would have to build substantially larger house. And it's unlikely that the market would bear, that the market would be interested. In that side, and that side out on this property in that location, and again, nothing against. This condition, but. A three million, thirty-five million dollar house. Where it has an eight thousand feet, where it's a main house. I mean, not as much as much. They're saying is, more than thirty-five. It's an economic bull be her, and the project won't, it's weekday, won't. Maybe it doesn't make any, I mean. Certainly enough. To warrant the investment, I'm accurate.
Okay, well, I I really appreciate um, man, your provision, and I have, there's no other option, you know.
So. So here's, here's what I'd like to do, so. You know, what I don't wanna do is then you guys go and decide to submit a month later, and now at some point we're back, so. What I, what I would propose is that, you know, we'll, we'll provide a recommendation not in support of this project. Cause that's where we stand, if you had decided at some point to reframe it as a three-unit development by right plan, and you're gonna come in, we'll review it then as a planning solution.
If you could. Uh, I'm just saying, because I never like a, no, I never like a denial, I never like a negative reputation, let me take my clients out. Okay, for a second, let's just see if we're gonna withdraw this zoning here. And then, we do. Um, we'll be back, and I'll just ask you to. Forget we were here.
Fair, we'll go into the next topic.
Thanks.
So, Claire, thank you.
Yeah. I think that's where we're the. A version, complete crap. Village zoning district, so they're not marked up at all, it's just. Completely clean draft, um. So the last night's meeting, we, I had just gotten a comment back from Sean, she had reviewed it. Um, Mike and I read through it together and addressed her comment. And some of the comments were about the uses, uh. And some were more related to the, to the draft, and so. I think that we're at the point now that we've addressed her comment, we've addressed Stephanie's comments, and um. I know that we also heard from David Goodman, uh. Comments about the uses, but. So. Many commission wants to to review those. Those points that he sent around, we can. Um, but one thing I will say about. The the use generally is that, and Mike, he's got the. Um, there are a lot of issues with generally in the district, but I think that might be something that township would be interested in the draft.
Yeah, we could. Right, yeah, we need to look at that, work out the entire order, so. The zoning ordinance, it's extremely antiquated when it comes to use definitions and use definitions. So, as a for instance, for office. It's either professional office or business office or corporate office. All three of those occur in a zoning ordinance, but also medical office, but only medical offices, I think it's once, and I think it's under condition we use in the R two zoning district. So it's kind of random, and so it's, it. It leaves it up for interpretation, and that's just the way that it's been handled for a very long time, and I know we talked about restaurants in detail. I, and I think that there's some work that we can do there, but what I would like to explore with Claire. Is some sort of used regulations section. Which is actually something that we see in other zoning ordinances and other municipalities in the area, and that actually lists all the uses. Their definition, and it's clear, and then when you go to each zoning district, it'll be clear and use the same verbiage. Terminology that is used in the used regulations sections, very important. And so I think we just need to handle that that way.
Yeah, that this, you know, my. My purpose wasn't to slow down this particular process, but like, when I see it, it always reminds me, and I thought, I'm gonna send this because. Part of it is just that it helps remind me of all these things, but. Every time I send a list like this, then, you know, when it comes time to do that down the road. If we can refer to this for. So I love to help in that, I mean, cause I'm looking at, I'm looking at zoning codes all over Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware every day. Uh, some are.
Why?
You know, most are antiquated, some are better than others. Um, some just have a big chart. You know, and 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 then some have the lists, you know, like we do. Um, but every time I see it, these are the things that I, I would think of. You know, financial planning, does that count as a financial institution? Right, or bank, so, so, yeah, if you've been with that. Use definition, and then we'll just map to that across village commercial.
I think that's.
Yeah. You're back.
Yeah, thank you very much again, we really appreciate your time and the comments, we're gonna withdraw the application, we're gonna go back, we don't think this is the last time you'll see us. Okay, sharpen our pencils, back, and. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Um, all right, so then what's more? So we'll do that, other than that, we've cleaned up a lot, correct? So. Sorry, something like this lost. Claire, what else do you need from us at this point?
I think that we have addressed everything, we've reviewed this a number of different times, we've done some. Design testing um in our office to check on the numbers, and. Um, I think we've gone through this with a pretty fine phone at this point, so. That's why I brought the clean, the clean, happy, free day. Uh, I think that there were. Everyone, but I don't think that was addressed.
Mm-hmm.
So. Good way you're in now, so we can adapt the use of. And the planning mission feels about it.
Right, exactly, so, that's the point, right, I think it's at the point where it's as good as it's going to get. And it checks off many of the boxes that we need to check, not all of them. But we would be here forever if we tried to do all of them, and so this moves the ball further. And if if the planning commission wants, they can, you know, recommend a. Adoption of this ordinance, and then we can get that in front of the board of supervisors to finalize. Can we do that without the use table, or would the people, the language allow us to reference the use table? You don't, well, this would just be a a motion just for this ordinance amendment, so it would be. To recommend the the ordinance amendment as it's rated.
I think if we're going to, you know, think more on like the use regulations, it it would, we would consider a bunch of stuff together. And think about that more. More definitely.
So. So I would, I would like us to move forward if everybody's comfortable. As as you've seen, development at the vault, at the old bank, is is moving ahead, that developer's been very good about. Understanding that we want them to work that in phases, but at some point, once they get through phase one, they're gonna wanna go to phase two, and I'd like to have something that we can be. Working with them in the context of this updated language. Okay, we've kind of stiff-armed them as long as we can, so I'd like them to have something we can actually use, so, um. With that, if a motion to uh adopt the revised ordinance? Thank you, second. Second, thank you, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, yeah, it's been a long time, right?
Um, just trying to pull up my thing, anything else? I think that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The motion to adjourn. So move, second, okay, all in favor? Um, so we've got, got a six-week gap here, back to the fourth uh, fourth Wednesday in September. Thanks, everybody.